Good evening and welcome to the November 20th, 2012 Planning Commission Meeting. Roll call please.
Chair Mishra.
Here.
Vice Chair Beasuti.
Here.
Commissioner Marshall.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson. Commissioner Chase.
Here.
Commissioner Peterson.
Here.
And Commissioner Samud.
Here.
Commissioner Chase will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Agenda item number one, approval of the minutes from July 17th, 2012. Is there a motion? Discussion?
Second. Does there a second?
No, I don't have a motion.
Oh, you don't even have a motion?
I don't have a motion.
Make a motion. We approve them.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All, any opposed? Abstentions? The minutes are approved. Communications?
Yes, I'd like to remind the residents at home that the full agenda packet is available at the, on the city website at www.sanbruno.ca.gov. And more detailed information on the Transit Corridors Plan is available on the project website at www.planbruno.org.
Thank you. Move on to agenda item number three, which is the public comment on items that are not on the agenda. We'll open a public comment if anyone has any items. If not? Public comment is open and closed. We'll move on to number four, announcement of conflict of interest.
Please, Chair. I will be abstaining from 6C, the Transit Corridor Plan, as I live and work within the plan area, so I have to abstain.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, we'll move on to new business. This is to consider the adoption of, consider adoption of a resolution confirming the review of the 2012-2017 Five-Year Capital Improvement Plan and 2012-2013 Capital Improvement Plan Program Budget and its conformance with the San Bruno General Plan. Staff report.
Thank you and good evening. As noted, the item before us tonight is to determine whether the 2012 through 2017 Capital Improvement Program is in conformance with the general plan. I would like to point out that this is something the Planning Commission does annually. As you may recall, the Planning Commission adopted a resolution at the January 17th, 2012 Planning Commission meeting and found that the 2011 through 2016 CIP was in conformance with the general plan. Since that time, two additional projects have been added to the CIP budget. The first is the Madison Slope Stabilization Project, the second being the Skyline Boulevard Widening Project. It is important to note that the only required action tonight is to determine whether the additional items are in conformance with the general plan. Staff has analyzed both projects and finds that both of these projects are conforming to the San Bruno General Plan. More specifically, the Madison Slope Stabilization Project involves repair to an open space area that has experienced failure in the past. As a result of this project, we will be preserving open space and will prevent damage to homes located below the hillside. The Skyline Widening Project proposes to widen Skyline Boulevard between Sneath Lane and Interstate 280. Currently, it's two lanes, one lane in each direction. The project will, or is proposing, to have two additional lanes, so a total of four, two in each direction. This is mentioned as a specific transportation policy within the general plan, specifically to widen Skyline Boulevard between Sneath Lane and Interstate 280. With that, staff does recommend that the Planning Commission adopt a resolution confirming that the CIP is in conformance with the general plan. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Are there any questions for staff? None? I'm assuming we're going to have public comment on this?
Yes.
Alright, we'll open a public comment on this issue. If there's anyone who has comments, please step up to the podium. Seeing none, public comment is closed. Bring it back to the commission for discussion.
Through the chair.
Commissioner?
I'd like to move adoption of the resolution.
A second?
Second.
It's a roll call?
Oh, excuse me. Chair Mishra.
Aye.
Vice Chair Beasuti.
Aye.
Commissioner Marshall.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson. Commissioner Chase.
Aye.
Commissioner Peterson.
Yes.
Commissioner Samud.
Aye.
Motion passes. Is there appeal period?
Uh, no, there is not.
There's no appeal period. Alright, moving on to item number 6A, public hearing, which is at 675 El Camino Real. This is a request for a conditional use permit to allow a motor vehicle dealer in the general commercial zoning district per Section 1296-110(c)(8) of the San Bruno Zoning Ordinance. Staff report, please.
Thank you. As stated, the applicant has applied for a use permit to operate a motor vehicle dealer within the C general commercial zoning district. The site itself is located on the west side of El Camino Real, between Canes Avenue and Angus Avenue West. Site comprises of three separate parcels of land. When combined, amount to 28,500 square feet of land. The site has remained vacant for the past several months. Between 2007 and the early portion of 2012, Slope Garden Center occupied the site, and prior to that, it was the former home of the Ford dealership. The application before us tonight is a conditional use permit to operate a motor vehicle dealer. Specifically, the applicant is proposing to sell pre-owned compact cars and family-sized automobiles. The main structure, which is located on the southwest corner of El Camino Real and Canes Avenue, will act as the showroom and sales office. The two parcels to the south of that will consist of the same lot area where additional cars will be parked. Ten to fifteen employees will be hired as the business grows, and the proposed hours of operation are 9:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., seven days a week. It's important to consider when looking at any new conditional use permit process, we have to evaluate the project in relation to its current environment. Staff finds that the proposed motor vehicle dealer is consistent with the existing land uses and will have several beneficial impacts. First and foremost, a vacant site will be utilized. As stated, the site has remained vacant for the past several months, so it's important to fill our vacant sites here in the city. Additionally, there are a number of exterior improvements that are proposed. Most notably, new landscaping will be installed throughout the entire site. The parking lot will be resurfaced and restriped in its entirety. Two new ADA parking spaces are proposed, and the buildings were recently paved. I would like to point out that there is a residential neighborhood located directly to the west of the subject site. Staff finds that the proposed use will not negatively impact the residential neighborhood as the motor vehicle primarily fronts onto El Camino Real. Staff has added two conditions of approval that I would like to point out, which will further protect the residential neighborhood from this proposed use. The first is that employees will not be permitted to park in the surrounding neighborhood, and an amplified intercom system will not be permitted. These were two of the primary concerns when the old Ford dealership occupied the site. Staff did send a courtesy notice and the required 300-foot public notification to all property owners within 300 feet of the site. We did receive one phone call from a concerned property owner, and they specified that they would like to see the hours of operation reduced on Sundays between the hours of 9:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. As proposed, it's 9:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., seven days a week. When staff approached the applicant with the property owner's concerns, the applicant stated that they typically do close early on Sundays, but would like the opportunity to stay open to 8:00 p.m., just in case there's any customers on site. Additionally, staff did inform the neighbor that we have added two conditions of approval, which will help protect the residential neighborhood from, essentially from the proposed car dealership. We did note that employees will not be permitted to park in the residential neighborhood, and that no loud amplified intercom system is permitted. The property owner was satisfied with staff's response and is in support of the project as proposed. With that, we would recommend that the Planning Commission approve the use permit request, subject to the findings of fact 1 through 3, and conditions of approval 1 through 27. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Through the chair.
Commissioner?
Now, the employee is not parking in a neighborhood. How is that going to be enforced? I mean, I've seen this a few times on different businesses, but I hate to see a condition that's enforceable.
I mean, the site is relatively close to City Hall, and primarily, we will rely on the residents. So if we do receive complaints, we will go out there and verify that they are abiding by their conditions of approval. If not, we will notify the applicant that they have to, or notify, we will notify the applicant that employees are not permitted to park in the residential neighborhood, but we will rely on the property owners.
Okay, and also, for the traffic in the neighborhood, I brought this up a few years ago when another business was going there, but the White Way, the alley in the back?
Yeah.
I think it's one way the wrong way, because right now, it's south. And so if anybody goes past, on El Camino passes business and turns right by City Hall there, because they want to go back to the site, the only way to go through it is to Linden Avenue, because White Way is the wrong way. If that was turned one way the other way, any traffic leaving the lot, if any of the service vehicles leave the lot, they can go out towards Canes and back out towards El Camino and just go through the business district. So I'd like to have maybe the traffic safety or the public works or whoever look into that, possibly look into that.
Okay, we could definitely have them look into it. Right now, just so I'm clear, it is a one-way street.
It's a one-way street, south.
Correct, correct.
Right.
You're proposing for that one-way street to be changed to go north?
North.
Okay. We can, I'll coordinate with the TSPC staff member to see what we can do about that. Frank?
Through the chair.
Commissioner?
Does that property that they're going to lease include the substantial parking area for cars that's right next to the far west of the property?
Okay, so the site itself is 28,500 square feet, so that consists of three parcels of land. Then there's White Way, and then there's a site beyond White Way.
Right.
Which is occupied by Grace Honda.
Oh.
In the, what's important to note is that the applicant is in the process of purchasing the Grace Honda dealership, located at 345 El Camino Real, and that when the sale does go through, they will be subject to those conditions of approval, and they will have access to that site for the storage of motor vehicles.
I was just relating to Commissioner Marshall's observation about the parking. When you talk to them about White Way, perhaps you could talk, would you consider talking to them about the, where the employees will actually park? Because I can see them wanting customers to park on El Camino Real. So if the employees don't have a designated place to park someplace on their property, it's not going to happen.
Correct, and chances are the employees will occupy the site to the west of White Way and park automobiles there.
Right. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? I have one, actually I have two. The conditions of approval, number four? Regarding the noise level, number of decibels? Could you explain for the record how is this measured again?
There is a specific formula within the municipal code, and it would be as measured from 100 feet from the site.
From the center of the site, from the furthest edge?
From the property edge, from the edge of the property line.
From the property edge on the further side or for the closer side?
Correct. It would be from all edges of the property line, so we would take 100 feet from every edge of the property line in each direction.
Okay. The second question I have is, could we get, I've heard Commissioner Marshall's issue about this street a few times in the last eight years. Can we get this added to the state city staff discussion so we have a follow-through on the agenda?
Yeah, we could definitely do that.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff? Thank you. Is the applicant present?
I am.
Could you take the podium, state your name, and tell us a bit about your project?
Sure. Hello, everyone. My name is Michael Capo, and I am one of the owners of Victory Automotive Group. We are the applicant for 675 El Camino. Victory Automotive is a family-owned and operated dealer group that operates in many states nationwide. Most recently, we have moved into California. My father started the company 15 years ago, and it is currently owned and operated by my father, my brother, and myself. We have recently moved into California with the purchase of the Honda dealership in Santa Cruz two years ago, and as of late, we also have purchased the Honda dealership in Auburn, California. As Matt mentioned, we are in the process of closing a transaction to purchase Grace Honda, and as a offset, in a place to retail and store our used vehicles, we are seeking approval for a conditional use for auto sales at 675.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the applicant? I have one, and pardon my, the irony of my question. How do most of your, how do you anticipate most of your employees getting to the site?
Well, as of right now, the current employees of Grace Honda park on their lot. So what we will have is the new car showroom at 345 El Camino, the used car showroom at 675 El Camino, and as Matt mentioned, we have a storage lot that is directly behind 675 El Camino. That is where the employees of both establishments will park, and it's a short couple-minute walk.
The reasoning behind my question was, if someone wanted a bike to work, they have a place to go and park?
If they wanted to park their bike at work?
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
Not motorcycle, but bicycle?
Yeah, absolutely.
But you have a secure lot, essentially?
We do, yes.
Thank you. So I had. Thank you. You can take your seat.
Okay, thank you.
Open a public comment. Are there any members of the public that'd like to speak on this? If not, public comment is closed. Bring it back to the commission for discussion. If there's none, is there a resolution?
Through the chair.
A motion?
I guess I'll, I'll make a motion that we approve Use Permit 12-013. There's some findings of fact, 1 through 3, conditions of approval, 1 through 27, to incorporate also Commissioner Marshall's comments about White Way, the one-way street.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion on the question, motion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? The motion's approved. There's a 10-day appeal period. Move on to item 6B. It is a request for a temporary use permit to allow off-site construction staging areas within the Crespo neighborhood per Section 128430 of the San Bruno Municipal Code. Staff report, please.
Hello. We're actually recommending that you continue this item to the December 18th Planning Commission hearing. The applicant was unable to attend tonight.
Okay. Before I honor the request, I just wanted to ask if there's any public that'd like to speak on this matter? I'm going to open public comment. Alright, public comment session is now closed. Is a motion to?
Through the chair.
I move this be continued to the call of staff when the applicant will be available.
Second.
Motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion for, to continue, approved. Move on to item 6C, which is the Transit Corridors Plan.
Through the chair.
I'll be leaving.
Thank you. Item 6C is?
Mr. Chair, planning commissioners, we have a presentation for you tonight. I'll be starting the presentation. I'm going to give you a background on the Transit Corridors Plan.
Do you want me to read the script here? Thanks.
Go ahead.
Item 6C, which is Transit Corridors Plan, this is to consider the adoption of the resolution number 2012-2, 2012-3, and 2012-4, recommending that the city council certify the final environmental impact report and responses to comments, and make findings pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act, amend the general plan to ensure consistency between the general plan and the Transit Corridors Plan, espere GPA 12-01, and adopt the Transit Corridors Plan. Staff report, please.
Thank you. As I mentioned, we will be providing a staff report, a presentation. I'll start with the background. Laura Russell will continue with information about the contents of the plan, including design guidelines and standards and so forth. And we also have our consultant here, Ray Pendrow, who worked on the environmental impact report, and he will give a brief presentation on the approval on the environmental certification that you will be doing later. Can we turn the lights down? Okay, historical land uses. San Bruno has been, the land uses in San Bruno have been influenced primarily by, they're primarily by four large influences, which I'll just go over briefly. The first one was the railroad and trolley, which extended from San Francisco down the peninsula to San Mateo and connected San Bruno to those cities, and also resulted in San Bruno becoming essentially a railroad suburb, developing areas from El Camino to the eastern part of the city. Those are the oldest parts of the city. El Camino Real, the roadway, obviously huge influence. The first mile of the road was actually paved in San Bruno 100 years ago this year, in 1912. This led to a huge growth in development in San Bruno and started the development towards the west side of the city. Along El Camino itself, it was developed with commercial uses primarily, but there are also some non-conforming residential uses along El Camino as well, but mostly a hodgepodge of auto dealerships, service stations, restaurants, retail, parking lots, and motels. After World War II, residential subdivisions developed west of El Camino Real and spread up the hillside. Then in the 1970s and 1980s, Tanforan Shopping Center and the Bay Hill Office Park were developed. Now, those were things that influenced growth in San Bruno. There are certain things that sort of slowed down growth, and one of them is Ordinance 1284. And Ordinance 1284 was passed by the voters in San Bruno in 1978, basically in reaction to the development in San Bruno and also the, sort of the end of the easy, new vacant spaces to develop along the hillsides and anywhere in the city. So we started to see apartment buildings pop up in residential neighborhoods and various other things that were sort of threatening to the small-scale residential neighborhoods. So Ordinance 1284 was adopted in 1978, and what it did is it prohibits buildings over three stories in height or 50 feet. It does not allow increasing the density of existing residential neighborhoods, and it also does not allow structured parking. The third influence, which is also a restricting influence, is the presence of the airport. The airport expanded significantly after the war, and basically, the influence of the airport is that residential, new residential development is not allowed in areas where the sound levels are too high. The statistic that's used is 70 decibels. So anywhere in an area where the sound level is above 70 decibels, new residential development is not allowed. And it also restricts heights in certain areas of the eastern portions of the city. In 2002, the Navy Site Specific Plan was prepared to guide reuse and redevelopment of the former U.S. Navy Site after the U.S. government auctioned the site for development in 2000. The city sought to capitalize on this opportunity, as well as the extension of the BART, which occurred about that time, and the expansion of San Francisco International Airport, to create a compact, mixed-use development adjacent to bus lines within walking distance of the new BART station. And it was based on the principles of transit-oriented development, which was a very progressive plan at the time. The crossing now includes over 1,000 units of housing, including 325 affordable units, 228 senior apartments, a recreational facility, retail, and the site of a future hotel. And the plan did require voter approval because it does include buildings that are over three stories, it goes up to five floors. So this was required under Ordinance 1284, and that vote obviously was successful, and so, community reaction to the crossing has been very positive, and it is, we consider it to be a model for the Transit Corridors Plan that we're working on at this time. In 2009, after extensive, an extensive public process, the San Bruno General Plan was updated, and it had not been updated before that since 1984. And the general plan established a new vision for San Bruno, and especially along the Transit Corridors Plan, excuse me, the Transit Corridors area and the commercial corridors of El Camino Real and San Bruno Avenue. Its vision includes emphasizing revitalizing downtown and the aging corridors, and encouraging transit-supportive uses, mixed-use development with connections to BART and the new Caltrain Station. It also encourages improved bicycle and pedestrian connections between residences, activity centers, and transit. The general plan established a transit-oriented development land use classification, basically along El Camino Real and San Bruno Avenue, which really provides the foundation for the Transit Corridors Plan that we're working on now. The Transit Corridors Plan was initiated to build on the vision that was established by the general plan, and the Transit Corridors Plan defines the land use and character of development in more detail for the city to redefine itself in the 21st century. The Transit Corridors Plan area focuses on commercial corridors in the core of the city, and these include San Mateo Avenue, the downtown, El Camino Real, basically from Crystal Springs Road all the way up to the 380 Overpass, San Bruno Avenue, and Huntington Avenue north to the BART Station, as well as an area, which is called the Station Area, just north of the new Caltrain Station. The main objectives of the plan are, one, to provide a framework for revitalization and redevelopment with mixed-use transit-oriented development around the new Caltrain Station; two, to establish standards and guidelines to promote high-quality public and private improvements; and three, to remove barriers for the private sector to invest in the area. The plan also builds on and incorporates initiatives from local, from other local and regional plans, such as the Navy Site Plan and the Grand Boulevard Initiative. The Grand Boulevard Initiative has a goal of improving the entire El Camino Real to create an attractive, an attractive, livable, walkable, and transit-friendly multi-use boulevard that can support higher-density mixed-use development, which the Transit Corridors Plan is in the center of. The plan, the Transit Corridors Plan area, is also a priority development area under the Associate the Association of Bay Area Government's Focus Program, and the adoption of the Transit Corridors Plan will make the city available for grants under the One Bay Area Program, which is a grant program under the Focus, the A-BAG Focus Program. The Transit Corridors Area has positive and negative attributes. It has a strong foundation of existing commercial uses and major transit connections, and a strong, and strong surrounding neighborhoods to build upon. With the construction of the Caltrain Station underway, the Transit Corridors Area is poised to evolve into a well-connected transit hub within the region and take advantage of transit opportunities. It is also the oldest area of the city with aging, underutilized, and deteriorating public and private improvements that no longer meet 21st century needs, and it also lacks a cohesive identity. These are some examples of those positives and negatives that I think you all recognize in the Transit Corridors Area. The Transit Corridors Plan vision is the culmination of input received from community stakeholders through community workshops, steering committee meetings, stakeholder meetings, and input from city staff. The community workshops included over 150 participants who provided marvelous input into creating the vision and helping to prepare the plan. The steering committee was composed of 17 members. It included residents, property owners, real estate professionals, two members of this committee, and two city council members. It met seven times, and it provided guidance in the preparation of the Transit Corridors Plan and reviewed the draft plan. The vision was the guiding force behind the development of the plan, and the vision includes seven elements, and I'm going to go through them just briefly, and here's some examples of community workshops and the process of developing the vision. I'll go through the vision elements, and these words are, you know, these are, this is language that came from the community, and, you know, this was the input that we got from residents. First is to envision downtown as a day-and-night destination. This includes promoting downtown for workers and residents, encouraging new residential development, and invigorating existing businesses. The second is local character and a distinctive identity. This includes integrating local history into public art and streetscape, and installing welcoming gateways and encouraging exciting architecture. A convenient multimodal network. This is a, this is a key to the plan, is to encourage people to use transit and to walk and to just become a part of a livable community. Basically, this is intended to design a transportation network linking pedestrians, bicyclists, shuttles, shuttle buses, BART, Caltrain, and automobiles. Economic vitality. This involves creating development in a business-friendly area, establishing a strategic, market-based approach to encourage appropriate growth and respond to local and regional market demands, encouraging new businesses such as restaurants, cafes, and outdoor shopping. Sustainable mixed-use development. This encourages new development with housing on top to add vitality and foot traffic and increase transit use. Supports green building design, promotes energy and resource conservation, and install sustainable infrastructure and green streets. A safe and inviting pedestrian environment. This involves promoting circulation and streetscape improvements that provide highly visible crosswalks, traffic-calming, and attractive design. Vibrant transit village. This focuses primarily on the area around the train station, and the idea is to create a memorable gateway to San Bruno and to seek to increase and foster economic ties to high-tech companies in Silicon Valley, San Francisco, and the region to encourage an office use in that area immediately next to the train station. I would also like to point out that we have, staff has made additional public outreach, including widely noticed public meetings, distributing information, a question-and-answer piece, to 2,500 residents, and that notice was sent out several times, once for a Planning Commission hearing in April. The question-and-answer piece was sent out also in the, this summer. There was a city council session, a study session in October, and, as well as focus articles in the San Francisco newsletter. Staff has also commuted by email or phone with about 40 residents in the last couple of months. The website for the project has received about 560 total visits from about 380 unique individuals. And one of the big concerns that we received from the public was a concern about eminent domain, and our, the response to that is that there never was eminent domain included in the plan. It was never intended to be in the plan. And so, we will be including in the plan prominently that eminent domain would not be allowed for residential uses in the plan, in the plan area. Another thing to point out is that the changes that are proposed in the plan do not affect the vast majority of the city, and as you will see in the presentation as it continues, the plan seeks to minimize the impacts on residential neighborhoods to the greatest extent possible, and staff has worked very hard to accomplish that. And now, I think we will continue with Laura.
Thank you, Mark, and good evening, members of the Planning Commission and members of the public. So I'll continue on in some of the specifics of the plan. And so, the question is, now that we have this vision, how are we going to implement it? What are some of the tools that are included in the plan to realize this vision? So the first thing is, the plan includes a number of design guidelines, and those design guidelines are organized into categories. They include things like site layout, so how buildings are oriented on any given site, building design, what do they look like, what are the materials, what's the architectural style, parking and circulation, so parking may be located in the back, and circulation convenient, but still not the most prominent thing, as well as sustainability. What measures can we take to ensure a sustainable future for the community while still serving the development community and removing barriers to quality development? So what we propose is that these guidelines would be implemented similar to how you implement the residential design guidelines now. So what would happen is, staff would analyze each individual project as it came up for public review. We would take public comments. We may see revisions to those projects, and then we would bring forward that analysis for your consideration. So the Planning Commission would have to make a finding, a legal finding of fact, that the project is consistent with the design guidelines. So I'd like to give you a couple of examples of some of the key guidelines and show some pictures so that people can really imagine what this type of development could look like. So you can see in this slide that the mass of the building is broken up into several vertical planes, and so it has some depth and shadow to it, as well as some horizontal elements like the balcony and the detail above the window that break this up so it doesn't look too large. A second important guideline is to really anchor the corners with architectural design. Corners are a really important design opportunity. This is a chance for the exciting architecture, those kinds of places that you recognize in a city. And so, the plan calls for what I would call kind of strong corners, and the techniques that you may use to do that would be maybe a slight increase in height, so it may be a little bit taller in the corner. You may have unique roof lines. You may have an especially prominent entrance. And so, you can see in this slide, this is an example of those things, with the round shape, the architectural details that change right at the corner, the change in materials, as well as the strong entryway. This is a concept that the Commission is quite familiar with, and the idea is to articulate the building elevation, so you break up the mass of multi-story buildings. So in this example, you can see some of the sections are recessed to create different planes. You can see a strong window pattern. You can also see that the balconies and the siding add a horizontal element to it, so it has both vertical and horizontal design features. And it also has a storefront with good windows and awnings that provides that visual interest at the street level, and so these things together help to contribute to a building that doesn't look too tall or too flat. So some additional concepts. This is a big one, to have ground-floor windows, and the idea of transparency at the ground floor helps to connect the building to the pedestrian environment, and so it's good for business, it's good for pedestrians, it creates that sort of interactivity when you're walking around with the businesses and with the residents. The plan also encourages a mix of exterior materials, and so this is commonly seen on buildings that are a little bit taller. You may have, you know, very sturdy materials at the base because a lot of pedestrians are going by, and then you have more ornate materials at a little bit higher level where the eye sees them, and then sometimes you'll have a simpler building form up on top because that's viewed from a further distance, like if somebody is driving by. So the plan encourages the change in materials to be consistent and sort of balanced with the overall form, and also consistent with the architectural style of the building. So a little bit about sustainability. The plan does emphasize that quite a bit as it's consistent with the general plan and the direction that the city is going in. So some examples include stormwater management, efficient use of water, efficient use of energy, as well as energy generation, such as solar panels. And so what you see here in this slide is, this is actually a stormwater treatment measure, where the water runoff would go into this kind of landscaped area and infiltrate and be treated before any remaining water would go out into the collection system. And so, these are becoming required more by regulatory agencies, but the plan talks about how they can be done well and integrated into sites. So it's important that the public areas and the private spaces really work together to achieve this overall vision. So the plan includes design guidelines for the public areas as well. So a key opportunity is around the station area, and so this is a real chance for a lively public space. There'll be a lot of activity from the office uses, we would anticipate, as the office uses get developed, and a lot of activity is people coming and going from the train station. And we do see in cases like this, office uses are more diverse than they used to be, and people don't always work the same set schedule. So many of these public spaces have interesting activities and things going on at many different times of the day and on the weekends as well. So there are also things that the city may do to increase safety and comfort for pedestrians. This includes things like bulbouts, landscaping, and other traffic-calming measures. Of course, these kinds of improvements would be subject to funding availability, but it's important to have these policies within the plan, and as Mark noted, it's within a priority development area, so it would increase our chances of receiving funding to do these kind of improvements in the future. The plan also encourages outdoor dining to increase the connection between the pedestrian environment and the businesses, and we know about the weather here in San Bruno, and the residents did tell us that it is something that they still would like to see. And so there are some best practices for heat lamps and for wind screens that can create a more comfortable outdoor dining experience, and I think it could be successful here in San Bruno's weather conditions. So I'd like now to get a little bit more specific about the five character areas that are described within the plan. So here on the map, the character areas are shown in different colors, and I'm guessing maybe you can't see it too brightly in the back, I'll try to describe it along as we go. So what is a yellow area is directly around the station, and it's sort of a triangular shape, and it goes up to the 380, and it includes Montgomery, San Mateo Avenue north of San Bruno Avenue, and the west side of Second Avenue. The next area is the El Camino Real character area, and that's shown here in blue, and so it's the long strip down to the left on El Camino, and that goes from 380 down to Crystal Springs. And then, what's shown here in pink is the downtown core area, and so that's the right-hand side of the triangle. I know all of you know the community well. So that's San Mateo Avenue and the downtown area. And then, shown in green on the map is San Bruno Avenue, and so that goes from El Camino Real over to the city limits on the other side, and it also does take up a small portion of Huntington Avenue as well, because they have some similar characteristics there. And then, up at the top of the map, what is shown in orange is the Huntington Avenue area, and that emphasizes the connection to Caltrain and to BART, and is really focused on pedestrian and bicycle improvements. So we're going to look at each of these character areas one at a time and talk about what could be expected if the plan is approved. And so, many of you have probably been out there recently, but if you have not, this is the current condition on San Bruno Avenue, looking west at the grade separation project in construction. This slide is a rendering of the type of development that could happen, that may happen, under the Transit Corridor Plan at that same location. With the grade separation completed, the train going over, this is an early conceptual sketch, and that that's not exactly what the station will look like, but it does give you a sense of what the scope of development could be, or may be, at that location. So you can see the new development, the landscaping, the entry features, all part of the plan. And I would like to take a minute here to note that staff has made some changes to the plan as we have received comments from the public, as we've gone through this process. And so, we are recommending that we go beyond what is required in the EIR and increase the setbacks and the stepbacks when they're adjacent to low-density residential. And I'll walk you through what that means in just a minute. But we wanted to make sure that the residents' concerns about the transition to residential neighborhoods were addressed, and so, tonight, the staff report, this presentation, and the errata sheet, which is included in your staff report as an attachment towards the back, those represent the latest and greatest recommendations from staff. So those things supersede the printed pages of your plan. Okay? So we'll go ahead with some details then. So the plan establishes basic development standards. So you can think of this as the basic form of the buildings, or kind of the maximum building envelope that could be allowed. Okay? So just imagine sort of the outline or the form of the building. That's what these development standards seek to do. So the station area, right next to the train tracks, would allow the most intensive development within the plan area to make the most of the proximity to the Caltrain Station and really fulfill the transit-oriented development potential. So at this location, the plan proposes that west of San Mateo Avenue would have the, potentially, the tallest buildings of seven stories or a maximum of 90 feet. So these standards are whatever is more restrictive, like we normally do in planning. So if you had a seven-story building, those could have quite tall floor-to-ceiling heights, and before you would get to 90 feet. So think about, imagine a seven-story building. It's sometimes easier to picture than trying to picture 90 feet. And then, between San Mateo Avenue and Second Avenue, the plan proposes 65 feet or five stories. So the height would be less as it goes towards the residential neighborhood to the east. And then, in regards to stepbacks, we'll continue to talk about that. It's a new term to a lot of people. The idea is that the building doesn't go straight up to its full height. The idea is that it sets in a little bit, and so it reduces the impact on adjacent neighbors and kind of opens up the area for light and air. And so the stepbacks here are proposed to be above the fourth floor, so 15 feet step back, and if the project is adjacent to low-density residential, so if there's a house or a duplex or something that- or something next door directly adjacent to it, the step back would be above the third floor. And so that's the change that staff has proposed in response to the public comments that we've received. So we will continue to see those step backs as we go forward, and it's an important aspect of the plan, to keep the building form from seeming too big or too looming over its neighbors or over the street. So here you can see a cross-section of El Camino Real, and this is an illustration from the Grand Boulevard Initiative. And you can see four- and five-story buildings on either side of the street. And it also shows this concept of the building's step backs above the third floor. Within the El Camino Real character area, the maximum height would be 70 feet or five stories, with step backs above the fourth floor, or again, above the third floor if it's adjacent to residential. And the setbacks within the plan are proposed primarily when it comes to front setbacks as an average. And so what that means is you could see some variation in the front setback, so that you may have a place for a pedestrian plaza, or a walkway, or a little bit of outdoor dining, while the other side, portion of the building may be a little closer to the sidewalk. And so that allows a little bit more visual variety. You can also see, actually, in the picture in the upper right-hand corner, this building has a fifth floor with a step back, but it's stepped back so that it's minimally visible from the street level. So here is a cross-section that's sort of similar to our downtown context. You can see on the left-hand side, there's street-level activity, there's residential above-ground-floor commercial uses. And you can see on the right of that building there, it is setback from the property line, from the little fence that's shown there, because of the residential use to the rear.
Isn't that, excuse me, isn't that setback on the residential area on the second floor instead of the third floor?
It is. You're correct.
So that's not a...
It's not a requirement of the plan to setback at this point above the first floor. It's a requirement to step back at a higher level, so this is more of a rendering.
See if I was following.
You got it. So within the downtown area, the plan does want to keep that real sort of Main Street feel that is there, so people really like that, sort of, the old downtown core feeling. And so the height limits in the downtown are a little bit lower, with a four-story maximum, 55 feet, so only a little bit taller actually than what's allowed today. And the step backs would be above the third floor, so the buildings don't look so large. And then the rear setbacks adjacent to residential would be 10 feet. So here's a cross-section again of the streetscape along San Bruno Avenue. So you can see a mix of uses here. There's ground-floor retail, office, or residential, depending on whether it's within or outside of the noise contour that Mark mentioned. Mix of uses, also opportunities for green roofs or roof gardens on the top of some of these. And here again are the setbacks we've been talking about. So within the San Bruno Avenue area, the maximum height is 65 feet or five stories. And then the step backs, again, above the third floor, similar to the other area with the front setbacks and the rear setbacks adjacent to residential. On the northern section of Huntington Avenue, the emphasis is really on streetscape improvements, bicycle and pedestrian amenities, and the connections to the different transit stops to both BART and to Caltrain, so in either direction. Proposals include directional signage, bulbouts, lighting, and safety improvements. The southern end of Huntington Avenue has more development potential. So that's the section from 380 down to San Bruno Avenue. And it has the same development standards as the San Bruno Avenue area. So that's five stories, step backs above third floor, and that transition to residential again. So the plan includes a discussion of three opportunity sites. And the intent of those is to show what kinds of development could be possible at a couple of specific sites under the plan. And this one, we wanted to share with you because it's more of a prototype of a five-story mixed-use building with a step back. So even though it was intended for one particular site, it is an example of the type of development we could see on San Bruno Avenue or El Camino Real. So I'd like to change gears a little bit now and talk about the transportation policies that support this type of development. So that's a very important link between the land uses and the transportation. How does all this kind of work together? So the plan includes the principles of complete streets, which emphasizes all users of the transportation system. So that's transit riders, transit operators, bicyclists, people with disabilities, families, strollers, wheelchairs, pedestrians. All of these things need to be balanced together with the needs of vehicles. And so the plan calls for improving the pedestrian environment. That's things like safer crosswalks and traffic calming, attractive streetscapes, reduced parking requirements within the transit corridor plan, I'll talk a little bit more about that, and a residential permit program to prevent overflow parking into the residential neighborhoods that are adjacent. The plan also proposes to study the realignment of the intersection of San Mateo Avenue and El Camino Real. So this is just a rendering that's shown in the left-hand side here. The plan recommends that this be studied further to improve access to downtown and to allow a large plaza there. So a key part of the strategy is to make the most of what we have. So we want to maximize the use of existing parking and also encourage people to walk between their destinations. And so in planning jargon, this is called a park-once and walk policy. So hopefully, people park one time and walk around the greater downtown area. Two ways that we do that are utilizing a parking-in-loo fees, where people pay a fee instead of supplying parking, especially if it's a small amount of parking they would be required to provide. And also shared parking, which is very successful in a lot of transit-intensive areas where different uses that don't need parking at the same time can go in together to meet their parking requirements. The plan also does to propose to reduce the required parking. And so a lot of the parking standards that we have today in San Bruno are considered outdated, and many cities have already updated their code. And so ours is proposed to be updated to be consistent with the transit-oriented development focus of the plan. So for example, new development in downtown would be required to provide three spaces per 1,000 square feet of new floor area. And you can compare that today to four spaces for retail, or many more for restaurant, as you're aware, as the planning commission. And so in some cases, it's a modest decrease; in some cases, like restaurants, it's a larger decrease. And that's because we do have those parking facilities that are in place in downtown. And we know that people are likely to use transit and get around more as bicycles and pedestrians as the plan develops. And then another example for residential development. Residential development would likely provide one space per bedroom, as opposed to a number of spaces per unit like we have today. And this has been successful at the Crossing. It's also been successful in many other cities that have adopted this policy. It's also commonly done for affordable housing projects that are using the density bonus law. Okay, so if we take all of this stuff, right, and put it together, so we have the development potential of all of these sites, and then we have development standards that outlines that building form, and then we have transportation policies that say how many cars and how we're going to get around. So now we get to this table that talks about the maximum plan build-out. Okay, so let me walk you through it. In the first column, we have what is there today. And the residential is listed in the number of units. The office and retail are listed in square feet. And then the hotel rooms are listed in the actual number of hotel rooms. And then the second column talks about the general plan build-out, specifically within the transit corridor plan area. So we know that the general plan already allows transit-oriented development and encourages it, and so that's the build-out that is in the adopted general plan. Next, we have the transit corridor plan. And this is the build-out, you know, the transit corridor plan proposes more intensive development than what we have in the general plan. So this is 1,610 residential units, for example, or 988,000 square feet of office primarily in that station area that we talked about. And then the last column that's shown in yellow, this is how much more the transit corridor plan proposes above the general plan. So this is the sort of new policy. This is the new vision. This is where you kind of see it flesh out. So this is the net new increase that we could see, propose with this plan if it's approved and carried forward. So with that, I will turn it over to Ray to talk about the environmental review.
I'm Ray Pendrow from MIG. I'm the project manager for the Environmental Impact Report. We have three slides about CEQA because it's not as exciting as the rest of the plan. CEQA stands for the California Environmental Quality Act. And this is it. And I don't recommend reading it over the holiday for entertainment, but it is an important document that I've been working with for over 20 years. And that's why you have an EIR for this Transit Corridors Plan. It's a state law. The EIR, or Environmental Impact Report, does not promote a project or tell you what choice to make. It has information in it to help you with your whole package of tools when you make decisions. So you will not see recommendations in the EIR for what project to choose or what alternative to make. The impacts are listed in your packet, and they were the same items that were discussed at the April 17th Planning Commission hearing. Most of the significant impacts are related to traffic on El Camino Real, and not primarily for the reason you might think, but because El Camino Real is a state route, and any improvements to it must be authorized by Caltrans. So in an EIR, I have to say that's a significant unavoidable impact until Caltrans helps you make improvements to it because they have authority over that roadway. So we have to call that a significant unavoidable impact. This is the final EIR. We received about, comments from about 12 commenters during your April hearing, and additional letters and emails that Mark received during the public review period for the EIR. So before this plan is able to be approved, the EIR must be certified as a separate action. Because the EIR by itself does not approve the project, it just says that the commission agrees that the information inside is accurate, that it's the city staff and city's own judgment, and not just my personal opinion that's in there. And so in that resolution to certify the EIR, there are things called findings, which are basically the impacts that are identified. Mitigation monitoring and reporting program, that's the impacts attached to the mitigation measures that are in the EIR. And that reporting program has columns that list who's responsible for the mitigation, you know, which city department, and when that mitigation would be put into action. It's a plan for city staff to make sure that mitigation measures are put into action at the right time. When you make findings, you are saying that the EIR has followed all the rules in the CEQA state law? And as I had mentioned, you would conclude that the information in the EIR is the city's own judgment and not just the personal opinion of the person who wrote it. And I already talked about the mitigation monitoring and reporting program table. The statement of overriding considerations is where the planning commission and the city council give their reasons if they approve the plan. As I had mentioned, the EIR is just an informational document to help you with your decision. The statement of overriding considerations basically says that the benefits to the community of approving this project in balance are greater than the environmental impacts that are identified in the EIR. You make that decision. And these, from city staff and from the plan goals and mission statement and vision statement and so on, these bullet points are items that Mark discussed about benefits of the plan. And I think I'm going to turn this back over to Mark.
I will talk a little bit about the general plan amendments that are part of the approvals. And the amendments include the change, changes to the land use classifications. Essentially, what would happen is that all of the property, the parcels within the transit corridors area would change, would change to transit-oriented development land use classification. As I mentioned earlier, the general plan update already created a TOD, I'll call it a TOD, land use classification. So roughly half of all of the properties already have that TOD land use classification. What we're proposing is that all of the property within the transit corridors area should be TOD. And that's really to streamline the process so that when you, when you look at the, at the general plan or the specific plan, the transit corridors area is a unified whole. So what that means is that, as I said, about half the properties are already TOD. We're also proposing that the CBD become part of the transit-oriented development classification. So that's 191 parcels in the CBD area. There are also 40 parcels within the low-density residential areas that would be included in the TOD area. There are five industrial parcels, and there are three regional commercial parcels. So what you see in this map is the, the light purple is the, is the existing TOD under the current general plan. The dark purple is currently what is CBD land use classification. The yellow ones that you see along San Bruno Avenue, a little bit on El Camino Real, a little bit in the station area, those are low-density residential. And the area in this, there you can see in the station area, there are some industrial parcels. And then at the extreme north, above the, what's the BART station, that right now is regional commercial. So essentially, this entire area would become all the, the light purple area. And so that, that's the proposed change in the, in the land use classification. In addition, the, another part of the amendment is changing of development intensity standards. And what this means is, under the, under the current general plan, sites that are under 20,000 square feet have an, are allowed to have an FAR of 2.0. Sites that are over 20,000 square feet are allowed to have an FAR of three, and then a little bit more depending on, on various incentives. What, what we would be proposing would be to remove the FAR for parcels over 20,000 square feet. So essentially, smaller parcels, you still, you know, you could not build to the full extent of what's allowed in the, in the transit corridors plan, what Laura showed to you, really without having a decent-sized development site. And so the, the, the building would really be, the building form would be regulated by height setback and the step back within, within the, the transit corridors plan standards, but it would be limited depending on the size of the parcel of the development site. Another, I think, very important aspect of the plan is that we would create an overall residential limit of 1... residential limit of 1,610 residential units in the transit quarters plan area. So that, that, the proposal is, that would be the maximum that would be allowed in, in the area. And one reason for that is that's what the, the environmental impact report analyzed. So if we were to go beyond that, it would require additional environmental analysis. Another reason for that is that we think that, or not we, the, the general intent of the plan is to remove site specific limits on the number of units. And so that will allow a more market based approach to, to housing development. So for example, a building with smaller units, say studio units or something, if that, if that's what the market was, demand was for, then that project would be possible. So that the, the number of units would be regulated through the development standards, through the, the height setbacks, step backs, and also parking requirements. So it's not like you could, you could just put, you know, all 1,610 units in, in one development. It would be impossible because you couldn't meet any of the, you couldn't meet the parking standards, you couldn't meet any of the other. So, but really, so what this is doing is it's saying there's an overall cap on number of units, but it, the, the amount allowed per project would vary depending on the site. So those are the two main changes in the general plan. The next step in this process is if, if you decide to recommend approval of the plan, it would then go to the city council for their review and, and consideration for approval. And if, if that happens, then the next step is, is the zone code update. And as you know, that, that process is in part, is in progress now. And the, the approval of the plan as it is would, would put the, the guidelines and the policies and so forth in place. But the actual standards, the setbacks, the step backs and so forth, the requirements would not be adopted until the zone code is completed. And as I say, that's, that's in process right now. Then the final thing is voter approval would be required under ordinance 1284. So currently, the height limit is three feet and 50 stories, and any decision you make here tonight doesn't, would not change that. We would need to go to a vote of the population of San Bruno. And that, there's a specific process, and that process includes town hall meetings where people can present, you know, arguments for and against, and discussion about the merits of increasing the height limit before going to a vote.
Ray, I ask you a question about that.
Yes.
Since ordinance 1284 is such a pivotal sort of thing here, why is there no mention of it in the transit quarters plan?
I believe it is mentioned, but it's not, it's not mentioned prominently. And in our, we have a, and I, attached to your staff report, we have an errata sheet, and we are, we're correcting that. So there will be prominent mention of the requirement for ordinance 1284, for a vote under ordinance 1284.
Really? Because I word searched the entire document.
You didn't, okay.
Using Adobe Acrobat.
Uh huh.
For the word ordinance and 1284, and nothing turned up. So that would be an omission. Is that right?
Uh, yeah.
Or I, I mean a, a mission you're correcting.
Yes, we would definitely be correcting that.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
It just seemed odd.
So the items before the commission are the, the three resolutions. First is a certification of the, the EIR. The second is, or recommendation of certification of the EIR. The second is recommendation for the general plan amendments, and the third is recommendation for approval of the transit quarters plan.
Thank you for the staff report. Are there any questions with staff? I have a couple. Could you go back to the, to the map where there are 40 on some residential units? Alan. So if this plan and resolution goes through and goes through voter approval and it's enacted in its form, years down the, down the line, those residential unit owners come back and say, want to renew my property, essentially construct a one story building that's there right now, just want to renew it. Are they going to be charged fees that are above and beyond any other residential R1, R2 units in the city? Is this reclassification going to cause them additional financial burden?
No.
No.
No, I, I can't think of any, no.
Okay. The second question I had was, the 1,600 units were, and that is for the total allocation on the, for the entire plan? If the number was to change, what would be the process in the future if this plan goes through as is?
Yeah, I mean, it would be, I think, equivalent to a general plan amendment. So it would be amending the specific plan, which is, sort of has the same, you know, this, it's the same as the general plan, really.
So it'll have to go through a, an EIR process again?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for staff?
Through the chair.
Commissioner.
You know, mention the possible seven story height limitation. Of course, I would have to go before vote of, you know, general public, but does the fire department have the equip, the equipment and, you know, the training, whatever, to adequately, you know, respond to an emergency of something that was, you know, in that height area, since we don't have that right now?
Well, I, I mean, we do, we have buildings that tall in, in Bay Hill, so. And yeah, and the crossing, and the crossing's a little shorter, but there are five story buildings at the crossing. You know, Tanforan clearly has, you know, taller buildings.
If, if I might, that is one of the categories in the environmental impact report, and the fire department was consulted along with the police department and other public services, and they did not identify that as an impact area when they reviewed the plan. Maybe they know something that you don't or whatever, but.
I'm sure they do.
Yeah, they, the public, the public service providers are questioned about, and they review the plan because it has to go in the environmental impact report, too.
Great, thank you. Through the chair.
Commissioner.
Wouldn't it be a good idea to hear from the public?
Yeah. Are there any other questions from staff, or for staff?
No, just.
Yes.
You mentioned CBD, and I heard a couple of people was referring CBD. What is CBD? Sort of, is that central business district? Just for those of you who were kind of wondering.
Thank you. We'll open a public comment. If you do want to speak on this matter, please step up to the podium, or maybe we have a mic for those people who can't make it up there.
Can I talk?
Yeah, let me see if I can procure. We'll limit the conversation per, per commenter to three minutes, just to make it reasonable.
Rose Erbaki from San Bruno, and I've lived in San Bruno 71 years. And if you look at the map, that square there is where I live. C is square, and then there's a half, and a half the duple it, and I did write it off. So you know that I know a little bit about San Bruno, even though one person said, oh, some people don't like change. Change, that's all I've known. When I came to San Bruno in 42, we only had 6,000 people. Now we have 46,000 people in an area that's five and a half square miles, which 40% is taken up by the, by the cemetery, by 380, 280, all the public buildings. So you're shoving 46,000 people into a very squeezing place, and then you want more people. You have to be very careful. San Bruno can be one of the best, and we have to be careful what we do. Now, we have the, let's see, I'm, I'm losing it. Now, when, when she was talking about heights in the ordinance, what was it, ordinance?
1284.
1284. I know it so well, I was part of it. But read it well. I hope everybody has read it, because there it tells you what the people then wanted to have San Bruno be in the future. Now, another thing that wasn't pointed out by the speaker was that when they went above three stories or 90 feet, that they had to go to the voter. It's not a question, the, the speech just kind of wrapped it in there. 50 feet, 100 feet, who cares? There is so much activity there. And as you can see there, where I live, we have more and more coming. The traffic is unbelievable. And the water, when it rains, it's like a river going down the street, the next to the, that, along the curb on the north side of the street, which is mine, and when it gets pretty much, it goes up the driveway. It used to have a drain, but the city took it out. So that's a big mistake. And there's more. Now, let's see. Another thing that happened that the public is not aware of, 1284 tells you single units, one family units, three, and more. Well, I know of one, it's a beautiful home, big, and yet it was allowed to section off a part of the inside of that house as another unit, and paid $10,000 for the permit. Now, let's see. I think the big thing that the city should do now is fix our sidewalks, fix our streets. Don't say, hey, public, now it's your turn.
Rose, can I, can I ask you to summarize? We want to move on as well, so.
I can't hear you, sir.
I'm sorry. Could I get you to summarize so we can go move on to the other? Yes, please.
I've heard everybody. I know, I know, I'm just, he's facetious, because I thought I remembered everything, but, but I wanted to tell you about the, that permit. Now, I wonder, I see, I see homes sometimes that they added another unit, another unit, so it's four and five, and I think, how can they get away with it? How does this happen? Doesn't the planning commission know about it?
We'll, we'll take that, take that up as a question at the end of the public comment session.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll cut it off now, although I waited for hours when, until that one was done.
Thank you. Thank you for patience.
Thank you, Rose, for all you've done. My name is Gary Pettenerek, San Bruno resident, 49 years. I live on, in Massan, at the 700 block, and the main concern that we have over there is parking with the transit, Caltrans going in at San Bruno Avenue. You know, there's going to be a lot of people parking, and then with the large or the high rises that will be along San Bruno Avenue, parking, we're worried that there may be migration of people, business going into the neighborhoods because there's really not area available for parking. I hope that you guys consider that as an issue that could arise in the future. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Joseph Muñoz. I just want to make sure on the San Bruno Avenue corridor, we're up there on the map, we got the purple and the yellow. Now, the yellow signifies what, residential homes? Is that right?
It signifies a residential land use classification, is what's shown on the map, but yes, in real life, those are homes.
Okay, now, are those homes being eliminated?
No, they're not being eliminated. So nobody is proposing to take those houses through eminent domain. Nobody is proposing right now within the plan to demolish those houses or to make the property owners do anything. If somebody approached those property owners in the future, they may wish to sell their properties, but nobody would make them sell their properties.
Okay, because your line on the map shows two houses behind the main street where in front, there's all these commercial businesses. So beyond that, there's two homes, and you got the line lying behind those two homes. So those, those homes are not going to be touched?
No.
They're not?
No, there's a, the, actually, the plan itself does not.
Can you?
It's not a, it's not actually, there's no project that's proposed, like, there's no individual development project. All this does is it, is it like zoning, like you can, you can do certain things to your house because you're in a, I believe, an R2 zone?
Yes, R2 zone.
R2 zone. This gives, this is now TOD, it allows you to do other things. But it, no one's going to making you do anything to your house. So there's no, there, there's no requirement that anybody does anything.
Could the zoning be changed now?
Pardon?
Can the zoning be changed?
Uh, yeah, yeah, the zoning could be changed, yes.
Okay, all right.
But that, that would require, that would, that would be part of the, of the, as Rose was talking about, that would require the vote. So the community will be able to weigh in on that. That will, that will need a vote to be approved to change the zoning, yeah.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, um, excuse me, I'm Diane Pique. I live on Green Avenue, and I am really concerned about the parking because, as it is, we're pretty overloaded now. And I'm concerned about the residential parking permits. I don't know anything about it. It may be, is there a policy in place now, or is that yet to be developed?
We'll, we'll take your questions, and we'll answer them in the end.
Okay, and the, the last comment I have is, I've just been reading two articles in Palo Alto where they have parking issues on University Avenue, which is close to the Caltrans Station. And they're having serious issues there because they have mitigated the parking for new businesses along the way, and that's exactly what this sounds like. And I think parking is going to be a huge issue. If we're successful, if you attract new business, you're going to have parking problems. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Vivian. I live on Mills Avenue in Euclid. I'm 20, I've lived in San Bruno for 21 years, and just three point, pointers I'd like to make, yeah, I also agree with Rose, I don't think there's a need for any more residential addition in the city. You guys showed the crossing up there, and the staff said 1,000 units, I don't know what you mean by that, but I actually called them right before this meeting, and amongst their three structures of housing or condominium complexes, there's a total of 672 condominiums slash apartments, whatever you may call it. Out of the 672 available housing spaces, only 280 are occupied. So that, I don't know if you guys took that factor into account. Also with parking, I live on Mills, as is, it's already congested. In regards to building more office space, I, I think that, I think that, I think the amount that you guys are proposing is unnecessary. I do think nearby, like in Bay Hill, there are a lot of vacancies, also in Brisbane there are vacancies. there were vacancies. And in regards to encouraging people to walk and take their bikes, I don't believe in charging for parking for the, in the movie theater structure. I think that would actually deter business. Yeah, and I don't think harsh parking restrictions, like charging people along San Mateo Avenue, would help at all. I think harsh governmental restrictions, I see that as bullying. And I, and I think it should be up to the individual, whether or not they want to, you know, if they want to drive somewhere, and they drive a block down later on, I think that should be their personal decision and their own choice. I don't think regulations, you know, shifting their decisions should be up to you guys. Thank you.
My name is Catherine Dubon, and I live on Seventh Avenue, in the eight-hundred block, and based on your map, my residence is closed in right where the line, including me in, where the corridors is showing the lining, and I'm a little concerned about that. I'm wondering if there's going to be any kind of corridors in between my home and my neighbor, based on the line that I see, right where San Bruno Avenue and Seventh Avenue, right behind the business from the corner of San Bruno Avenue, close to 101. Our residential street here has a really big problem with parking, because most of the airport employees, they, I guess, want to save on parking, and they park on my block, and then walk up the overpass towards the long-term parking. So, based on that, we already have problems with our children actually being able to ride their bikes, or do their thing out in the front of the neighborhood, because of all the vehicles that come. And as you know, our block is a one-way, you can't enter it, you have to go around the block, and you can only exit through San Bruno Avenue and Seventh. And I'm really concerned. And based on the buildings that you're planning to raise, and I already have a building next to me that already makes my home dark, where we've had to plan with my husband to maybe have some extra windows put in on different sides, because we are in the dark. And I can't imagine more buildings closer out that are going to give us more darkness instead of sunshine, so that is my concern. I don't think it's a good idea where the residents are. I think we will all be very affected. The business area is different, I think, because there is all different kinds, sizes of buildings, and that's more understandable, but, yeah.
Thank you.
That's all I have to say.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Josh Hug, I'm program manager for the Housing Leadership Council of San Mateo County, and several months ago, our board took a look at the plans for downtown San Bruno, and decided to approve this project, this plan, because we think it's vital, not only for San Bruno, but really for the quality of life within the entire county, really. I'm sure you're quite sensitive to the fact that housing prices in San Mateo County, even despite the downturn, they're rebounding quickly, apartments are at an all-time high, and that has had numerous impacts, our lack of housing. And a plan like this really helps to meet that dire need for housing in a much more sustainable manner, that ultimately should produce better outcomes for the community, both in economic vitality and meeting the needs of residents. Right now, we see about sixty percent of the people that work in San Mateo County actually commute from outside of the county. Some of it may be lifestyle, they want to live up in San Francisco. The vast majority of them are coming from areas other than San Francisco, the East Bay, the South Bay. That makes for very long commutes for, particularly for lower-income workers, teachers, retail and restaurant workers, the people that actually make downtowns vital, have a very difficult time living in our communities, even though we are so dependent upon them. That also creates problems with employee retention as well. We think this plan provides not only that needed housing, but a pedestrian-friendly environment that also appeals to younger people who want to live in a more vibrant area, but also, almost as critical, or perhaps even more critical, is what is being built as the impending senior tsunami, or the silver tsunami. In the next ten to fifteen years, one in four people living in San Mateo County will be over the age of sixty-five. A lot of those people are living in single-family residence right now, up in the hills. As the houses become more and more difficult to maintain, they may want to downsize, or just shed the responsive, and shed the responsibility of maintaining a home. At this point, we have very few options available to seniors. Village at the Crossing is an amazing amenity for seniors, we need more of those. And we need those in more walkable areas that are close to transit, so they can get the doctor's appointments, to the grocery store without having to get into a car. So, for a wide range of reasons, this plan is vital to San Bruno's and San Mateo County's future, and we urge that you make all approvals necessary to move this along. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments from the public? If not, I'm going to close public comment. I do want to reiterate that, even though I'll give the staff the opportunity to answer questions, you can follow up with more questions to staff. So, this is not the end. So, public comment is now closed. Laura, Mark, did you want to answer some of those questions?
Okay. I guess I'll start with Rose's comment, which I think is well-taken. I just want to emphasize again, ordinance 1284, it does require voter approval. So, anything exceeding three stories will require voter approval. Parking structures requires voter approval, and increasing residential densities requires voter approval within residential areas. So, I wanted to emphasize that. Anything else that you noted on Rose's?
As I understood your question, I think you were asking how people are able to add units, or additional units, to their properties, and that's a two-part answer that I would give to you. One of those things comes from state law, and that's called a second unit application process. And so that allows very small units, typically six hundred and forty square feet or less, to be, to be added either within the same building as the main house, or sometimes in a separate structure. And that's something that state law requires, that we accommodate, and we have very strict regulations, but some of those are allowed. We process only a handful of those per year in the entire city, but that is one way that people are able to add additional units to their residential properties. The second answer to that question is largely because of the economic pressure that's on people. Oftentimes, people create second living units without permits, and without approvals. And so that's something that our code enforcement division works with very closely, to monitor those, and we do make people remove those units when we become familiar with them, and so that's a code enforcement issue.
We should be told, never let it fall in. It's like changing a single-family unit area to a, a...
Rose, can I encourage a offline conversation, if that's possible? Thank you. Can we move on?
Okay, and I think the, the next question was concerning parking, and I believe it was primarily in the train, train station area, and the impact of new development on parking in the neighborhood. New development in the, the plan require, has parking requirements. So, any, any new development, especially office, will accommodate the parking of the, you know, the office workers in the, in the building. So, to the, to the extent possible, as I say, the new development will, will accommodate the parking needs of the new residents and the, and the new office.
Through, could I just add something to that, just so I'm clear? Or, not add to it, but whatever. The idea behind this whole plan is, you know, particularly by the train station, is if there is the opportunity for, you know, a new building to go up, whether it's four stories, five stories, and however many employees, the idea is to have, you know, if they're going to be using the train, or whatever, not for them to drive from wherever they live to the new particular office, you know, it's to use the train, it's to be more green, for lack of a better term, I guess. Am I correct in pretty much stating?
You're absolutely correct. That's a, that's a very good point. And that is a big emphasis of the plan, I think, as we've mentioned over and over again, is to encourage the use of transit. And that was, one of the reasons that office is proposed in that area, is it's within that seventy-decibel zone that I'd mentioned earlier, so residential can't be built there, but office can. And as far as mixed-use development goes, office is also makes, can be a mixed use, and next to a train station, it could be, you know, a very successful development, and people can commute by, by train to their, to their work.
Thank you. Actually, I'm going to discourage questions at this point. Shall we move on?
Through the chair, if I could also add, the plan does recommend what's called a residential permit parking program, and many cities have this, and San Bruno does have a small permit parking program now, but the basic concept is that the residences receive the permit that they put in their cars, and then enforcement knows that those are the people that live there, and so it creates a mechanism to keep people from parking in the residential neighborhoods, and it has been successful in a number of transit-oriented developments all over the Bay Area. So that's what the plan recommends to help mitigate this issue. And I would also add that there's an element of sort of self-selection when it comes to transit-oriented development, and again, this is seen in other places throughout the Bay Area. So some companies are specifically locating near transit, and then they have programs for their own employees to encourage them to take transit, to pay for transit, or to even pay them to not drive. So these are things that we're seeing as trends in, in urban development around transit. And so the plan tries to say there's going to be enough parking for the people who do drive, but we're not going to provide extra parking for the people who do not drive. So that's the balance that the plan seeks to strike.
Laura, is there a fee associated with the...
I'm sorry, I'm going to have to stop that, because that is a part of a separate discussion, I knew that was coming. And I would encourage, after the meeting, to approach Laura, because she has more details about that. Let's, can we move on to the next question? I do want to, one answer from the staff to the public comment addressed here today, before it gets too late. So this way, if there are follow-up questions, there is a venue for that.
The next issue, I believe, had to do with the, the need for residential, and I think that's, that's, that's a big question. The city has various requirements. We adopt a housing element every five years, and we do that under very strict state guidelines. We have to get, be certified by the Department of Housing, the State Department of Housing. And as part of that process, the state projects the population growth in California, in the counties, and in the cities. It allocates housing units to every community in, in the state. So every community has to apply, has to comply with the number of housing units that is designated by the state for that local community. So, for example, in San Bruno, in our last housing element, we had a requirement for nine hundred and seventy, to have zoning sufficient for nine hundred and seventy-three housing units. And Millbrae had a, had a certain number, and South San Francisco had a certain number, every community has it, and it's, and it's allocated in what's called a regional fair-share allocation, so the attempt is to look at what the available sites are, what a community can accommodate, and to distribute, distribute the units that way. And we're right now going through the, the process of the next housing element, where we will be assigned additional housing requirement. And within that requirement are also the requirement for affordable units. Doesn't mean you have to build all those units, just means that you need to have enough site to accommodate those units if, you know, the need arises. So those are, those are requirements that we, that we have, and if we don't, if we don't have a certified housing element, which we wouldn't if we didn't have the identified sites, then there are various penalties, one of them being that you don't qualify for certain types of grants, and so forth. So that's, that's one thing. Planning for housing is a, is a local issue, but it's also a regional and a statewide issue. The population is growing, and the population in the Bay Area is growing, and that's, that's a fact. At the crossing, actually, the total number of housing units at the crossing is one thousand and sixty-three, and, you know, there's Archstone Smith, that, that may be what you, the resident was referring to, because they, they own, I believe, three buildings, but there are, I believe it's, it's five, five buildings there, and the total number of units is one thousand and sixty-three. And I, I don't know where the number came from, from the two hundred and eighty unoccupied, but that's, that's not what I understand. I mean, I understand, for example, for affordable units, there's a long waiting list to get on, I mean, a very long waiting list, to get a affordable unit there. And that may have to do with, a couple of those projects came online within the last couple of years, you know, maybe they hadn't completely filled up yet, but my understanding is that the, that the occupancy is quite high there. As far as, as office goes, we have, I mean, recently, we had YouTube located in San Bruno, we had walmart.com located in San Bruno, they're looking at other sites in, in the Bay Hill Office Park. The economics of office, you know, goes up and down as the real estate market does in, in sort of all areas. And we think that San Bruno is really well-positioned to attract a really high-quality office right next, next to the station, close to the airport, close to freeways, near San Francisco, near Silicon Valley, and so forth. That creates jobs, that creates activity, hopefully foot traffic that, you know, shops in San Bruno. So, we think that's, that's good planning for, for a community. And as far as the, the parking congestion goes, again, I think we've, I think we've addressed the, the parking issues, the, the plan will accommodate parking, the, the plan promotes transit use, it, and it also promotes a residential permit parking program that hopefully would mitigate the, any problems that would occur in residential areas. And as far as the, the park, you know, the park once, I mean, we, certainly, anybody, this does not prevent anybody from driving a block to do whatever they want, and driving another block to do what they want. It's just that for convenience, I think that most people would want to park once, and, you know, go about their business, and, especially if they're... you know, go about their business and, and especially if they're in a pleasant environment with, uh, you know, nice streetscape and, uh, interesting businesses and so forth. I mean, that's, that's the atmosphere we're, we're trying to encourage. And I think the next, the next question also had to do with parking. That was the one at Seventh, uh, Seventh Avenue. And, um, again, I think, you know, permit parking, a, a residential permit parking, that could be an answer in, in that situation. Another thing to consider is that when you, when you look at San Bruno Avenue, um, you know, assembling parcels to create that 20,000 square foot threshold, uh, development site in order to maximize your, you know, your FAR is not going to be that easy a thing to do. This, I mean, this is a long-range plan. This is a plan that's, looks forward 20 years. Things will happen incrementally. Um, the, those, we, we experience this all the time, even, even with bigger projects. Sometimes if you can't assemble the parcels, you can't, you know, it just doesn't work. And I think in these more, you know, more complicated, uh, areas like, uh, along, um, San Bruno Avenue where there are, you know, parcels in multiple ownership, um, you know, that would take a pretty dedicated, uh, developer to, to make, uh, a significant project work there. Hopefully, we're, we are making it possible eventually for that to happen, so we would And I think that, I think that, I think we've covered.
Yeah.
Most of the questions.
We'll bring the, um, since public comment is now closed, we'll bring it back to the commission for discussion. Any final?
Did you say public comment is closed?
It was closed, yes.
Okay.
Um, is there any discussion by the commissioners?
Through the chair.
Commissioner. Before you move on to the resolution, I have a comment.
Sure.
Um, I, as a statement of full, full disclosure, I actually was one of the committee members, uh, steering committee members for this plan. It's been a process in coming for the last two, three years now. Um, there, it's gone through a lot of incremental changes, uh, through workshops, et cetera, and, uh, it's nice to see a plan developed so far. This is not the end of the road. It will develop, develop some more. It'll go beyond, uh, you know, beyond the city council. And if it gets approved here today, it'll move on to the city council. If it gets approved there, it'll move on to the voter. And I'm looking forward to it when it comes onto the ballot. Uh, I personally, um, agree with the plan. It's a long-range plan. It's a opportunity to, for growth for San Bruno. It may never happen, nothing in this plan may ever happen, but it's a opportunity for growth, um, in whatever shape that the future holds for us. So I'm looking forward to it. Commissioner?
Uh, thank you. I'm a little bit more optimistic than the chair, I think. Almost anybody, if you visit other cities that have had transit improvements take place around them, uh, front, on the peninsula of Palo Alto and San Carlos and so on, and Walnut Creek and places like that, things happen around transit. So I, I have to say, I agree with staff that the quarter plan is a well-recommended document. At the same time, uh, people have brought things to my attention and I've noticed a few things. If you were either listened to or saw the last study session with the council, a number of residents local to these large development areas, uh, made comments about their concerns about parking, about noise, about light and air. And I made a little diagram for myself that showed an aerial view of the city and what those structures would look like. Uh, you know, you all know where Highway 380 is going through San Bruno. That's about 25 or 30 feet high. The, uh, the buildings that are at the Caltrain Station and up and down San Bruno Avenue start at double that height. So that's, that's a concern that, uh, was brought up by one of the local residents. They were concerned that they were going to be in an area that's hemmed in between 55-foot high buildings, a 30-foot high freeway, and a 90-foot high building at the west end. They described that as potentially a noise canyon. And, uh, a consultant waved away that concern by saying he knew of no study that would show that this, that this would be a problem or the magnitude of that problem. I think that's what commissions are for, to listen to what you say and to think about it. And so because of that, uh, I, I made a number of comments and distributed them to the council and commission. I'd like to share them with you. Not the least of which I hadn't mentioned before, but in a way, this is a, an unknowable document because it hasn't been updated by the sheets that were distributed with the staff report. So, uh, there's room to question how well we know the plan, although I think by and large it's pretty clear. And I think, as I said, I, I agree. It's a good plan. It's a good idea. If, if businesses don't know what they can build, uh, they're not going to build, uh, make proposals just on their imagination. I think the plan needs graphic communication improvement. The type size is very faint and very small, doesn't meet legal standards. Uh, the type should be at least 12-point so that when somebody reads it, they know what they're looking at. This document is going to guide at least potentially $500 million worth of development. So a lot of people are, you can be sure, are going to be reading it, trying to understand what they have to do. In addition, there are a lot of pictures that have no, no captions whatsoever. And many of the pictures in this document don't even relate to the text that's adjacent to them. I think that San Bruno deserves better than that, and I think it's not difficult to do. Not to mention that many of the captions for the pictures are so small, uh, that you almost can't read them. They're, they look to me to be something like five or six-point type. So I think it's just a simple mistake that was made by people who were in a hurry to produce the plan, but I think it really should be rectified. The, uh, essential requirement of Ordinance 1284 and a vote of the people to approve this was not mentioned in this document at all. At all. And I brought this to staff's attention and I believe staff has really done a good job. And they continued to do a good job by making a plan to add some explanation. I think the plan, in order to work, has to include all the elements of it. The, uh, the, the plan says that there are five character element, elements immediate to the plan. In other words, uh, El Camino, San Bruno Avenue, San Mateo Avenue, the station area. And those are said to have, uh, relatively little effect on the rest of the city. But in fact, as anybody who lives in San Bruno knows, every time you come to, to downtown, you run into more traffic. In this document, it talks about the traffic conditions now as being all right. Well, as anyone who drives in San Bruno knows, El Camino Real is far from being all right. So I think there's some real thinking that's available to be done here. And I don't know that that, I, I certainly think that the language in a few places could be improved, but I, I just don't know what they can do about that. It also says the storm water is not affected by the, uh, development, yet it goes to compute that there's going to be more storm water developed by the development. That confuses me and it's a concern, I think, to anyone who lives in the avenues because they end up, uh, almost drowning from time to time, depending on the volume of rainwater. So I think there's room for im- improvement there. San Mateo Avenue, that's, that's been a problem for access ever since they cut off the direct access both ways, maybe 20, 25 years ago. But it looks like they're thinking about that. The one thing that is not in the plan that I, I really think it would be, uh, very valuable to have is a, uh, resident protection plan. A resident protection plan. The plan talks a lot about what they're going to do on San Mateo Avenue, what they're going to do on San Bruno Avenue, et cetera, but it doesn't say what they're going to do for the adjacent residences. I know the planning commission members here realize that every time we have a, a use permit to study for a business that wants to make enlargements on El Camino Real, San Bruno Avenue, San Mateo Avenue, residents come in and say, you know, those businesses are already parking in my neighborhood. I can't even park in front of my house. And they talk about how many cars come through their neighborhood and isn't there a way to block off some of these, uh, some of this traffic that's unwanted from a residential standpoint? So to be, to be, uh, fair and reasonable, there are things about that in here, but you have to really hunt to find them. As staff mentioned, they're considering a resident permit parking plan, so you can put an identification on your car if you live in the avenues or next to the development. And unless you have that, uh, permit, if someone drives in there, they'll see a sign that says, "No parking without permit." Now, I don't know what you do for your visitors. Maybe there'll be courtesy card or something. But I think there's more needs to be done in defining in this plan. Remember, why, why would I talk about this so much? I'm getting tired myself. Because this is what has to be done. This is going to be the gold standard. So if there isn't a resident protection plan in here, how is that, how, how do we know that's going to happen? And that resident protection plan should address traffic in the neighborhoods, the idea that they're going to be far more transient people adjacent to the neighborhoods, they can walk or drive into the neighborhoods. Uh, this presents a potential peril to those residential areas that they don't have right now. They have a little bit of it, everybody has a little bit of it, but when you build four or five-story buildings next to you, it brings a little undesirable as well as the desirable. I think it would be nice if someone really thought about how some of these, uh, noise, light, and, uh, similar impacts could be addressed to at least more mitigate the damage to the residents. Right now, it says, yes, the potential damage has been identified and there are overriding mitigations and considerations. Well, that may be, but I don't see anything in here that says what is the proactive, positive, regular consideration that city staff, the council and commissions will give to the residential areas when the new developments come? Now, you can bet a new building on San Bruno Avenue is going to bring a lot of tax money and a lot of more spending money being applied to San Bruno. But at the same time, wouldn't it be nice if, uh, they think about what's going to happen when you have, uh, five stories on San Bruno Avenue and the sun is coming from the south and the shadow goes down eight or nine properties behind it? I don't know what can be done, but if there's a method to address it, I think it would be valuable. Now, I, I already gave my comments to staff. Uh, they said they're thinking about it. It's one of those things, you don't know what thinking will result in. But I would like to invite other commissioners, if they think there's anything positive I've said, I'd like to hear about it. Or if you think, uh, I'm excessive, please let me know. Thank you very much.
Are there any?
Through the chair.
Sorry. Yes, Commissioner?
Yeah. Um, once again, Commissioner Peterson is quite eloquent in the way in which he talks about anything that comes before our commission and before the public here. Although I don't always agree with 100% of what you have to say, it's, it, it's well-spoken and it's easy to understand. As far as, I happen to sit on the steering committee as well. And of the meetings that I had the pleasure to attend, of which it was pretty much all of, I think I missed one, the attendance of, of the general public, the comments of the general public that was, um, you know, put into, uh, into this plan, into this, you know, process of this work in pro- progress, if you will, um, it was quite extensive. It wasn't as if, you know, there was no thought given to a lot of the, um, the comments that, that we've heard here tonight. This plan isn't saying that, you know, next week, there's going to be, you know, a, a nine-story building or, you know, a seven-story building. There, there's a process that all this has to go through. The plan is to give us, you know, um, a roadmap, if you will, to how we can, you know, continue to be vibrant and continue to, you know, have affordable housing and, and, and create jobs and keep people here. You know, it's not, it, while it's a blueprint, it's not like, you know, it's etched in stone. It's not the Ten Commandments of, you know, San Bruno. I mean, it's, as Perry said, should be the gold standard, no doubt, but, um, you know, it's a work in progress. For a lot of the comments that, that we heard here tonight, you know, we heard at, at these, uh, other steering committee meetings. So, um, please just, you know, I mean, I understand that it wasn't just, you know, thrown together. It was, you know, a lot of hard work by, you know, mostly by the people in the community, not by the planning commissioners or city council. It was, you know, business people, residents, um, you know, you name it, they were, they were there. So, yeah, there probably is some improvement to be made, no doubt. There's always improvement, you know, to any document, probably, um, as in life. So just keeping that in mind, I mean, it's been a long, a long journey and, you know, I think it's a good document as, as has been stated. That's, that's my comment for the evening, because that's pretty long. Thank you.
Um, Commissioner Peterson, Peterson, I, I do agree with the, um, the paperwork comment that, you're, you're right, the font size is, is harsh on eyes and it should be improved. Um, I did want to check to see if information is available on the website as well, which is a much more palatable format. I just wanted to double-check that.
There, there's a plan on the website. It's, it's this one right here.
Right. So, okay. Um, so I just wanted to point that out, that it's also available on the website. I, I agree with the fact that it is, it is harsh on eyes and if you don't have the right glasses, you can't read it. Uh, I completely agree with that. Uh, on the other hand, I also think that there are some comments that you've made that are more finessing of policy, that I, I don't know how the staff was planning on addressing that in terms of the specifics of a parking permit. But I do agree with the overall intent of the, the resident protection program, you know, sort of identifying and highlighting which elements of the plan are, are designed, whether it not be designed in full detail, but designed in some concept to, to identify and protect the existing residents. So I, I think it's a valid comment.
Just to clarify, I'm not advocating that it be a, uh, huge, voluminous.
No.
Many-numbered item. item thing. I'm just advocating that there be a specific number of items that are always checked for each new permit.
And I personally think that's a valid comment.
Thank you.
Any other comments from commissioners? No? Okay.
Yeah. And I would just like to add that that's very well-taken, and staff will... We are addressing your comments, and I think the majority of them we're able to deal with that you provided in the email. But also, what you raised today, we will certainly explore and address before we go to the city council.
That would be great. I appreciate your help.
Did you want to hear from the consultant?
No. Well, yeah, I guess I do.
I had an answer of one of your questions.
Okay. Could I ask the consultant to... Yes, please go ahead.
This is...
I'm sorry.
Since I did mention at the workshop that I was not aware, that's because I'm not an acoustical engineer. So I did contact our acoustical engineer who worked on the EIR for us. So I will just read you. It's about three sentences from the email about the noise canyon comment, and I'll leave it at that. I'm just conveying his message. "There may be some noticeable reflections off of large buildings if you were located on the street between the buildings when aircraft fly over. The reflected noise component off the buildings would not be substantial compared to the direct noise exposure from aircraft and traffic. Would only affect that air, that would only affect the project area where the plane is flying over, and would not be focused at any existing sensitive receptors outside the project area." It just basically means if you're standing in a street when a plane flies over, it's already so loud that the reflected sound off those buildings you wouldn't notice. It also means that as soon as you get out of that street, it would not affect the house because noise disperses at an incredibly quick rate unless you're already inside that corridor of tall buildings.
Thank you.
That explains anything. But it did come from the engineer and not just my own experience.
Commissioner Vesey?
Yeah. Early on in the conversations, I had heard a lot of comments from people about parking. And I really think that putting a parking program in place should be preliminary in all of this. The idea is to get people out of their cars, get people to take public transit, and limiting their opportunities to park in residential areas at the outset of this is in keeping with what this plan should be all about. So on one hand, we protect the residents and their parking in their streets. We're keeping people off of those streets, and at the same time, we're promoting what this project is all about. So I really think we need to make that part of the leading edge of this conversation.
Any other discussion by commission? I just want to make a statement that I know that there is follow-up questions, there is follow-up comments. And I, in the interest of keeping fair and being fair, I'm not going, I'm going to direct you to the staff so that we can record them and bring it up at the next hearing, whether it be this one again, based on what the results are, or the city council. So with that, planning commission discussion is closed. Let's move on to...
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. If I give you a chance, then I have to leave everyone a chance.
I'm sorry. I'm going to have to direct you to the staff after the... I'm sorry. But in interest, to be fair, do the rest...
Through the chair.
Yes.
As a point of information, if you have any comments that you aren't able to make tonight, or you want to amplify your comments, you can write them down and email them or mail them to staff, or, and if you want, you can say, "Copy." City council, I'm sure staff will give a copy to the council. The council will be the next stop.
If it doesn't get approved here.
If it... Well, it'll, it has to get approved one way or the other at this level before it goes to the council. But whether that's tonight or later, we don't know until we vote.
That's correct. So let's move on to the resolution.
Through the chair.
Good.
Technically, it's a recommendation.
Yes, it's a recommendation.
So let's be clear on that.
Yes, it's resolutions for recommendations. Let's move on to 12-2. Do you want me to read it, or are you going to read it?
Yeah.
Okay.
You're not going to read the entire resolution?
No, 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 just the title.
Oh, just checking.
Yeah. Resolution number 2012-2, resolution recommending that the San Bruno City Council adopt sequo findings, facts, and overriding considerations in a mitigation and monitoring and reporting program for the San Bruno Transit Corridors Plan.
Is a resolution on the table? All in favor?
Aye.
Do we need a second? Oh, sorry. It's a roll call. It's a roll call.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. Just so we're clear, we're doing things a little out of procedure here. So did we have a motion to introduce the resolution? I know that the planning director read it, but we need a motion to introduce...
Sorry.
We need a second, and then we need a roll call.
So move. Any second? Second. Aye.
Vice Chair Beasudi?
Aye.
Commissioner Chase?
Aye.
Commissioner Peterson?
Aye.
Commissioner Sumut?
Aye.
Aye.
So the resolution 12-2 is approved. There's a, is there an appeal period on this?
No, there is not, because it's a recommendation to the city council.
It's a recommendation to the city council. We'll move on to resolution 12-2. Is there a motion?
12-3.
Sorry, 12-3.
Your motion.
Is this, is there a second?
Yep, second.
Is motion and a second? Please read the resolution.
This is a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of San Bruno recommending the city council amend the San Bruno 2009 general plan to ensure consistency with the Transit Corridors Plan. Chair Mishra?
Aye.
Vice Chair Beasudi?
Aye.
Commissioner Chase?
Aye.
Commissioner Peterson?
Aye.
Commissioner Sumut?
Aye.
Resolution 12-3 is approved. Moving on to resolution 12-4. Is there a motion?
Through the chair.
Commissioner?
I'd like to move the commission recommend approval of resolution 12-4 with the additional cover information that the planning commission recommends improvements in the graphic communication format of the plan, of the Transit Corridors Plan, and also that a section be added entitled Resident Protection Program, which shall apply to each permit approval under the plan.
Is there a second? Are there any amendments to that resolution?
Question on the...
Question?
Second there, actually, on the motion. What is the effect of putting the residential protection plan? How does that affect what we're looking at right here as far as, what does it change? Does now have to go, do we have to have all, you know, more meetings, which is great, whatever? I don't, doesn't matter to me. But this residential protection plan, to me, it's kind of vague. I'm not really clear on it. So I am not really comfortable with yea or nay if I'm not, if I don't really understand, if it's not, you know, right in front of me.
All right. Through the chair.
Commissioner?
Let me make a suggestion. How about if it be defined as including all the measures currently existing in the Transit Corridor Plan that have an effect in advocating the residents' interests, such as parking permits, noise, and other items?
Yeah, not be limited to those.
Right. But in other words, it wouldn't include anything that's not already in the plan, but it would gather information in one place that tends to protect the residents' interests.
Okay. Now I'm clear on that. Thank you.
Okay, I'll take that amendment.
Do you second that?
Sure, I'll second.
Great. Can we read the resolution with the amended?
Resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of San Bruno recommending to the city council the adoption of the San Bruno Transit Corridors Plan dated March 2012, with the addition that staff will summarize the various parts of the plan that impact or that protect residential areas.
And? I thought they had a second part. Clarity?
And also that the plan before it's published will include graphic communication improvements. And generally, those were outlined in the written memo I sent you.
So resolution, roll call vote?
Chair Mishra?
Aye.
Vice Chair Beasudi?
Aye.
Commissioner Chase?
Aye.
Commissioner Peterson?
Aye.
Commissioner Sumut?
No.
Okay. Do we need a full quorum of, for this resolution?
No, the resolution passed by a vote of 1, 2, 3, 4 to 1.
Great. So that concludes item, agenda item 16C, 6C. We'll move on to discussion. Agenda item number 7, city staff discussion.
Yes, I would like to call for volunteers for the December 13, 2012 Architectural Review Committee.
Everyone.
So we have Commissioner Sumut.
I'm in.
Beasudi.
Aye.
Peterson.
There you go. Just go right in order. There you go.
And Mishra.
I'll take the next one.
Any other city staff discussion? Any planning commission discussion? Nope. Then we adjourn.
Just a quick comment. Staff did a great job. Really thank you to the general public. It's great hearing, you know, all this. It doesn't fall on deaf ears. So, thank you.
And we adjourn till December 18, 2012, here at 7 o'clock.